I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Drive me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, council members.
Ms. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Botkins?
Here.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Here.
Mr. Ivey?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Triplet?
Here.
May be noted, all seven council people are present tonight, and we have roll call of elected officials and Safety Service Director.
Mayor Larry.
Here.
Augur Grubaldinger?
Here.
Director Walt Palmer?
Here.
Treasurer Sparks?
Here.
Safety Service Director Ward?
Here.
Okay, you've all had a chance to look at the September fourteenth council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the council meeting minutes from September fourteenth.
Alt made the motion, seconded by Mr. Ivey. Any additions or corrections? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. The minutes of the September fourteenth meeting been hereby approved. Moving on, we have one ordinance that needs to be added to the agenda. It's 2021-97. Do we hear a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add ordinance 2021-97 to the agenda.
You've heard the motion by Dr. Felner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Richard seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
The ordinance 2021-97 has been added to the agenda by a seven oh vote. Now we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, Dr. Felner made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Ivey. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. The motion to amend the agenda as amended has been approved. We have one that would like to speak tonight, Mr. Patel from Sleep Inn. If you want to stand maybe at the end of the table here, address the council people, whoever wants to do it, and address the council if you will, okay?
Thank you very much. Hey guys, as most of you know, you know, these gentlemen right here are taking over the Sleep Inn Galleon, you know, property. I'm vibe of Patel, and we own the gas station next door. We run and operate that business, have been doing it for last three years. We came, you know, they came in touch through, I also manage hotels, and they were looking for somebody local who's been doing this, you know, for a while, with a good background to do it for them, and we finally came to terms and we'll take care of it. You know, the property is just beautiful, fantastic, you know, wish it was taken care of as it should have been, but you know, I think it's going to be in a better hands going forward, and we appreciate all your help in making it a successful project.
Any questions to council?
Thank you.
Counsel, have any questions, Mr. Patel?
Uh, no, we don't need that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for coming to Galleon, and welcome here tonight, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to legislation, Resolution 2021-15, that's the third reading.
Resolution number 2021-15, in summary, resolution in support of the Freeze Center Capital Improvement Project and requesting Freeze Foundation funding for that purpose and declaring an emergency.
Okay, discussion on this resolution. Mr. Richard?
Mr. President, I've got some questions about this, but something that came to me last yesterday concerning one of the sections in here, and I would, I am going to make a motion here momentarily to amend some of the verbiage in there because I think there may be a misunderstanding. Currently, the section I'm referring to is Section One, which states that essentially the capital improvement project for the request of five million dollars from the fund, I'm paraphrasing by the way, for the purpose based on conditions set forth in Section Two and Four.
Two, Three, Four.
Section Two through Four, my apologies, thank you. That section would lend, also lend itself to, if passed, to a, essentially a declaration by this council to say that once the stipulation of Sections Two and Four are met, that it would be, could automatically be sent to the Freeze Board as a request for that money. I think that it would be beneficial for council to be able to make that determination at that time, as opposed to having anything that might be automatic. I know it wasn't written that way originally, the intent's not there for that, but in my mind, that's something that would be a consideration. So what I'm proposing to make a motion to amend Section One, the, after, or before, let's see, I'll make sure I word this properly, the Freeze Center Capital Improvement Project and for a request, before request, I'm making a motion to add the word proposed, continue on down through the Edward M. Freeze Foundation for that purpose, comma, subject to future council action, to be added to this.
And Section Two, at the end of Section Two?
Uh, no, the end of Section, it's still on Section One, this is all Section One. Essentially, how this would read then would be that city council hereby expressed its strong support for the purpose, or proposed Freeze Center Capital Improvement Project and for a proposed request of five million, and all the dollars, from the Edward M. Freeze Foundation for the purpose, subject to future council action based on the conditions set forth in Sections Two through Four. That is my motion.
Heard the motion by Mr. Richard, do we have a second? Mr. Botkins, seconded motion, discussion?
If we can pick up your two guys' votes, I'm all favor of it.
I guess my question-
We need an amendment at the end, if you're going to vote no, I don't understand that, but it's your prerogative, but heck, if that's a fifth vote, a sixth vote, I can go with that.
My question would be towards the law director, is that how you understand that this current resolution and the format that it's currently written would obligate the five million dollars towards it tonight, or is Mr. Richard accurate from the legal perspective, the way the wording is?
Well, you know, as to determine what the legality is, you read it just as, you know, an English major would read that. What you're doing here is expressing strong support for the project and strong support for request, it's not making them request. So while I'm not, I think that this does suggest that future council action is necessary as it is currently written, what Mr. Richard is suggesting certainly does not change the intent at all, as it currently is.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't-
Dr. Felner?
Aren't all resolutions and ordinances subject to future decisions on council? I'm not sure why it needs to be stated. We've already had, I mean, Section Three's pretty strong that the conditions must be met before any money is changed hands. I think we got an initial packet with handwritten changes that were discussed. Am I wrong on that, Julie, the first one, there is?
It was hand, it was these, they were handwritten in there because Mike Richard had called with those concerns, and I asked Thomas, and Thomas has my council page looking at it, and he wrote on my packet, and I-
And when did, did we discuss those concerns the last council meeting?
No, this just happened like yesterday, or-
Yeah, yesterday.
Yeah, and I forgot that they were on my council-
And I-
So we-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, you know, we got those handwritten little notes, and does this language not reflect your concerns? You want to modify it some more?
No, that's not handwritten, this is the handwritten notes that he's proposing, that's the handwritten note.
It was, Doc, it was an error on that those notes were a discussion between Mr. Palmer and Julie concerning my concerns, and Mr. Palmer was responding how to word this to meet those concerns, and somehow it inadvertently got added to the packet that went out, that's why she reset it out. So the idea is, it's nothing, I just had, it was brought to my attention by a couple of citizens, and that this, as well as, as it was mentioned when I was talking to Julie about this, so that's why I made the concern involved, and I, Mr. Palmer was gracious enough to add these verbiage. You're correct.
So the verbiage was added based on your conversation with Mr. Palmer?
No, the verbiage, the verbiage was, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have seen the verbiage.
It's been added now, by his motion.
Well, that's what I, that's what I mean, it wasn't discussed in a council meeting, it was a contract, okay.
No, 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 that's why I'm making this motion.
So I guess my question is, is that regardless if the amendment is a pass, nothing changes in the end. I mean, it's still going to require a future ordinance, this is just the guarantee of the backing of the city towards the port authority, regardless if this amendment is passed or not, correct?
I would say this, I think that the proposed amendment makes it clearer that it is a future action that will be required of council. Dr. Felner's absolutely right, council next month, next year could change any vote that it makes tonight. Mr. President?
Yes.
I said that, I made that comment jestfully, and I, I have a sense of how this will sort out, but I really, in seriousness, I really don't know why what I think is the majority of support for this would want to amend this if you all who made the motion the second aren't going to vote for it. It's like, wow, if you're going to still vote no, then it's been, it's good to go either way, so, I mean, I think it's a good idea to get as large a majority in support of this as possible, but, you know, anyways.
Well, I'll add just one more thing, too. The reason why it's not for as much clarity for the folks around this table and maybe in this room, except maybe the gallery, but I think this would be more clarity for the citizens out there that's going to view this either currently or subsequently, is my point.
But my, just, I don't think this makes, for the people who are going to be here next year and who support the project, I don't think this weakens this.
Right.
I think, you're, we were all like Dr. Felner was saying, you're always likely going to have to come back in some year, this year, the next year, and have, as we always do, an ordinance actually making the request. I see this, this project as part of that package, although it could be a separate submission. So anyways, it, I think it picks up a few votes, I think it's a swell idea. Otherwise, if it passes, I'll sign it.
If none, roll call for the amendment.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins, did you, well, yes or no?
Yes, he did.
Yes, okay, I didn't, I didn't hear it. So it passed seven to nothing. Dr. Felner?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass the amended resolution number 2021-15.
Heard the motion by Dr. Felner, seconded by Mr. Ivey, discussion? Roll call?
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
No.
Mr. Triplet?
No.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
No.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
It passed four to three, final vote. Moving on to ordinance 2021-97, this is first reading.
Orders number 2021-97, entitled Ordinance Approving Amendment to Development and Tax Increment Financing Declaration of Covenants Running with the Land and Imposition of Continuing Priorities of Leaks.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, Dr. Felner?
Yes, while the ordinance did not come out of committee and was voted on, this was discussed in economic development, and I'm going to, as we all know, the Patels are here to, not necessarily represent, but for, to hear, for strong support, but I'd like the mayor to review what this ordinance is about.
Thanks, I'll try to get the high points. From the time that the foreclosure happened, the law director and myself, not to hang him on any hook, believed that the eventual high bidder would ask for some sort of changes in that use agreement, the signing use agreement, helping those stuff.
Technically, it's a declaration of covenants.
Okay. Service payment, thank you, thank you, I, the term slipped. Looking for some relief, what had been discussed at a meeting at my office was to continue to have the new owner pay for the water and sewer, which at this point is exclusively theirs, and their, if you will, share of the stormwater, the curb and gutter that gets them from Brandt Road back to their access point. When the project was first built, the city with agreement of the original owner had built about 700 feet back, maybe a little more than that, back to the cul-de-sac. Initially, as everybody will remember, that wasn't a through street. When that, when Freeze Drive was connected and became a public road, the single purpose use of that cul-de-sac really became a public street. So we, what the discussion was with the new owner is you pay all your water, all your sewer, you pay your share of the curb and gutter, and we'll convert that into a monthly service payment or an annual service payment, and that's what you have in front of you, is that amount. So what they'll pay going forward is, and this will finish up their obligations, water, sewer, and their share of the storm sewer. The other thing that's important to note, because it is a complicated deal, and the fact that there was, if you will, partial payment on the rest of the taxes from the beginning, there's two other pieces of money, chunks of money, those are not really technical terms, one in about $56,000, which is attached to the purchase price by the efforts of the law director to have the lien, so when the foreclosure happened, our, our past debts were included in that, looks like.
Well, it's more than 56,000.
It is, but that was the original judgment. At this point, there's an attached, I'm going to stop there because I'm not going to cobble up the numbers because it's an ordinance, so if you have a clear recollection, go ahead.
Right.
So it's, this ordinance modifies the service agreement. What I'm trying to get across is that isn't all that the city is going to get in unpaid, unmet utilities. So if you, if you'll help, as you did last week, to explain that, then I think that would be instructive.
Sure, happy to. On the sale of the property, which has not happened yet, by the way, there has been no confirmation of the sale of the property. You may have heard that it's sold at auction, well, the auction took place, but the actual sale has not yet been accomplished. But of the proceeds that will come from that, the city is protected from the amount that was in the judgment, which is about 108,000, and then there's an additional amount of money that is going to be sent to Crawford County by virtue of the collection of taxes, and 75% of that will be coming to the city account as well. So there were two different pots of money in addition to what Lyman, Lyman has paid a small amount, how much is that?
That was, I think, through 50,000.
That was 55,000. So the city's going to be made whole with all of that. This, we're talking right now about the obligation that will be created, you know, in addition to the lien which is on the property that we are getting paid for out of the proceeds, that minimum service payment obligation continues all the way until the end of 2026, and that's what you're talking about modifying that, taking it where it, what that number would be, it's about 82,000 dollars a year, and changing that to the number that you see on the last page of the agreement that you have in front of you, which is 176,864 dollars. The reason you have a blank above that is because we have to count, do a calculation once we know what the date of sale is, in terms of what the annual rate will be to create that 176,864. I've been working a lot with the mayor's office on this, and Matt Atrey's done a great job of getting all those numbers together, so that's where we're at right now.
Hey, Doc, you should have asked the other Tom in the room, shouldn't you, to begin with?
There's too many.
Thanks, but I think, I hope that answers your question, if, the, what the covenants do, how this makes the city whole, and I hope answers some of the questions about whether or not, who's going to pay for this.
Other questions?
Does this make sense to you?
Yeah, I think what I was going to say, and I almost jumped on Tom, Thomas, as he said that the deal, the sale hasn't closed, I really believe without putting any kind of words in Randy Patel's mouth, that this is really, getting this passed will allow them to go ahead, finish with the banks, and get the, and get the transaction in place. So they, I think they drove down here in hopes of introducing themselves, but also getting the decision made tonight so that we can get the transaction completed.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Richard?
Well, Mr. President, I think that it's very important that we try to encourage the sale of the hotel, and hopefully, I think these gentlemen will be a asset. So with that, I will make a motion to move ordinance 2021-97 to the final reading.
Okay, heard the motion by Mr. Richard, seconded by Mr. Ivey. Roll call?
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Suspend the rules passed by seven oh vote, now back to the ordinance, Mr. Triplet.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-97.
Heard the motion by Mr. Triplet, seconded by Mr. Botkins, discussion? If none, roll call?
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote.
Thanks for listening, our team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Bye now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to ordinance 2021-86, the first reading.
Orders number 2021-86, entitled Ordinance, Amending Ordinance Number 2020-92 Permanent 2021 Appropriations by Appropriating and Transferring Funds to the General Fund and Port Authority Fund and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion? Dr. Felner?
Yes, this came through finance committee meeting, and it, the topic was the moving of 300,000 to the Port Authority so that they can set up a loan agreement to continue on hotels on Carter Drive. It was discussed at a full council meeting, and the legislation just wasn't prepared for the last one, and so we discussed it again in finance, and it stands before you for passage, hopefully this evening, because they would like to start the groundwork this year yet, and this also, and I'm going to ask Chad, this is, Chad Miller, if this is accurate, there also some of this money was, is going to be used to start the Wrench Field projects for single-family houses, so there is a sense of urgency in it, it is something that we've discussed in the past, it's not a grant, it's a loan, and I think it's another boost to the community.
Okay, other discussion? Dr. Felner?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2021-86.
Heard the motion to suspend the rules in this ordinance by Dr. Felner, seconded by Mr. Ivey, roll call?
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Suspend the rules passed by seven oh vote, now back to the ordinance, Mr. Ivey.
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-86, please.
Mr. Ivey, do we have a second? Ms. Alt, seconded, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ordinance passed by seven oh vote, moving on to ordinance 2021-87, first reading.
Orders number 2021-87, entitled Ordinance Authorizing the Safety Service Director to Enter Into a City of Galleon Job Creation Tax Credit Agreement with Six Acquisition LLC, DBA, Uhlert's Fresh Food Foods, and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion? Dr. Felner?
Yes, this came through Economic Development Airport Committee, meeting, committee meeting, there was representatives of buers here, I believe, the manager, the general manager of the Galleon store, and this is something that we have offered to local businesses in the past. There was, years ago, a lot of discussion around the wording and, you know, what it represents. I'd like the mayor to just kind of summarize what that means, and it feels good to extend it to buers to come into the community.
But I guess the logic, thanks, the logic that I apply to this is that currently, no income tax is being earned at that site, no income tax being paid, the city's not earning anything. We're also, we also have lost a payroll the last two or three years in the, in the neighborhood of six to eight hundred thousand dollars, even at the end of the previous owner, pretty significant payroll earned by a lot of locals. So what this does, it, the city will forego its income tax that we would charge the 2%. What we would get as a community is a new grocery store, and starting out around 800,000, the expectation over the first five years, 800,000 new payroll, new money in the community, and then if things go well, having that grow to about a million dollars a year in payroll. So the upside is increased earnings in the community. I think a lot of people that they hired are local folks, so that's a, you know, a good thing that money will be earned here, most likely a lot spent here, and, so that's the, that's the upside, I think, and also, the last thing to say is, it's the only incentive that buers has requested of us, so.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Just a quick question, just for clarification, the previous ordinance that allows the abatement of income tax, that is for a possible 10 years, whereas buers is only asked for five years, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. So I think, yeah, I'm glad you pointed that out. That's a good point, because they're, they are asking for the highest percentage, but they're, the term is only five years. Thanks for mentioning.
Other discussion? Dr. Felner?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-seven.
Dr. Felner made a motion to suspend the rules in this ordinance. Do we have a second? Miss, I, I can't miss this. Okay, Tara, okay. Seconded.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules is passed by seven oh vote. Now, back to the ordinance. Mr. Ivy?
Go ahead, Mike.
I'd like to make a motion to pass twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-seven.
Okay, Mr. Richard made the motion, second by Mr. Ivy, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote. Moving on to ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-eight, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-eight, entitled an ordinance approving and authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Galleon and the Crawford County Transportation Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion. Dr. Felner?
Yes, this came through Economic Development and Airport, and never heard of a CCTID before, so I'm gonna let Mayor Leary take this one away.
Yeah, I won't make fun of the name, I think that, but it is Crawford County Transportation Improvement District. Shortest version of this is that the TID had been formed about two years ago, I think, on paper, and no projects had ever been requested through the, through the TID process. So, as we were looking for funds to match a meager amount of funding that we think we'll be able to come up with, not agree, very good, but come up with to add the left-hand turn lane to Brant Road, we began to have conversations with the TID about using some state funds that they have custody over. So that's what we did. We submitted a relatively small project in the hopes that it would be, you know, one that would be eligible and easy, if you will, to fund. I think it turned out that way. There were, I'm gonna, I don't have, I think there were forty or fifty projects submitted statewide, and a, and a much smaller amount that were approved. So I think it, it's good that we got this approved. What I think is the best, oftentimes with highway, best thing about it is that oftentimes with highway improvements, the money comes in after there's a safety hazard or congestion problem develops. What this does is anticipate increased traffic out of that intersection with the soon now completed, we assume the demo will be completed, but the completion of that demo and a new manufacturing slash warehouse building constructed there, there'll be an access point and a way to handle that, anticipated traffic. So, the split on it, the, is a hundred and fifty thousand of money flowing through the TID, administered by the county engineer, a hundred and fifty thousand roughly from us for an estimated three hundred thousand dollar project, so. What this does is formalize the agreement that will put the county engineer in charge of the construction project and identify the city's role in that project through this intergovernmental agreement. So the project's left-hand turn lane, the ordinance is about the, the intergovernmental agreement to allow the money to flow and the authority of the engineer to administer the funds.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Felner?
So, just to clarify, though, you know, the, it's gonna be kind of in conjunction with the five ninety-eight project?
Yeah, it'll be funded up with it, yes.
It, it involves the, the east-west Brant Road?
It does.
It not, it does, this has nothing to do with five ninety-eight?
No, it's the left-hand turn on Brant Road, eastbound Brant Road.
East, okay.
Yeah. So coming out of the industrial park area or out of the sleep-in, there'll be a left-hand turn.
Will it be a separate, if we do a left-hand turn lane coming south into town, that'll be a separate situation in itself?
On the other side?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if that'll ever, I don't wanna say never, but the geometry doesn't lend itself to it, if you think there's a residence there and trees, directories, or shutter flies real close. So it's at least the improvement of that leg of the intersection. And I think you'll, this passes the intergovernmental agreement. The next time that you'll see it or hear about it is in twenty-two budget discussions, and that's where I would expect us to fund the project. That's also when I'd expect this project to actually be sold to the construction market, so. Anyways, it gets this out of the way and allows us to have the bureaucratic feel, if that's not too much of a turn off. It'll allow that relationship between county engineer and the city to go forward. So that's what we got.
Dr. Felner?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-eight.
Heard the motion by Dr. Felner, second by Mr. Botkins, roll call.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote, now discussion on the ordinance. Mr. Richard?
I'd like to make a motion to approve twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-eight.
Heard the motion, passed this by Dr., Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Ivy, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Also passed by seven oh vote. Now moving on to ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-nine, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-nine, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to execute a capital improvement community park recreation conservation project pass-through agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, Dr. Felner?
Yes, this came through finance. I, I didn't realize the square had a name, Park Square, so I was a bit confused as to the location. But, again, I'd like to ask Mayor Leary to elaborate.
This, this is the capital bill money that Galleon was awarded. It's at a hundred thousand dollars. This is, early in the year, the fund was set up, and there, and the, I believe the appropriation is in place here for that, to receive that hundred thousand. This will be reimbursable, trying to think, a lot like the Depot Pavilion Project, same pool of funds. So what this will do is put in place our agreement with ODNR, like the caption reads. And then, again, we expect to see plans middle, end of the week, and we'll make a decision once we see what the plans are, whether or not to go ahead and, and bring them to bid, in which cases we'll come back to you to authorize bidding, or if we'll decide to wait until twenty-two to go ahead and bid the project. But it sets up the agreement for the money to flow through from ODNR. When you read the fine print, I'm not sure everybody did, it's kinda tedious. They, they have a two percent sort of admin fee, so. They award us a hundred thousand dollars, and we've got ninety-eight thousand to spend. We think the project is, will be in a neighborhood of a hundred and twenty thousand, likely. We, we hope for that, we'll be able to get the mural in, included, different vendor, but that and the reconstruction of the, of the, of the square itself.
Okay, questions? Questions? Dr. Felner?
Yes, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-nine.
Heard the motion to suspend the rules in this ordinance by Dr. Felner, second by Ms. Earleston. Roll call vote.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote, now discussion on the ordinance. Mr. Triplet?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-nine.
Heard the motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Mr. Ivy, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Get passed by seven oh vote, and I'm moving on to ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash ninety-one, first reading.
Ninety. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash ninety, entitled an ordinance authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with the trustees of Polk Township of Crawford County, Ohio, to provide for the furnishing of fire protection and emergency medical services to the residents of Polk Township and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion, Dr. Felner?
Yes, this came through finance, and I don't, I didn't see, chief, it's a longstanding agreement between the City of Galleon and Polk Township. I, I asked chief in the committee meeting how long, he's like eighteen ninety-four. I mean, it's a ridiculous, long time. So this is a renewal for, I believe, a five-year period of time. I'm sorry, six-year, I'm told, six-year period of time. And there was, there was something about the payments incrementally, maybe a little lower in the beginning, and then getting back up, but the, I think there has, it will be an increase over what we're receiving now, and it's proportional to the call volume and, and our expenses on the Polk Township runs. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, I think that's, that's well said. I would, if I might add just a little bit, the, that level payment is really something that the township likes. It's predictable for them, they can, they can budget that, and it works real well. I think, if I might just go on for another second, you can say with Chief Jackson out of the room, you can say stuff in a way you can't say with the guy in the room, because then he's gonna have a neck injury. But the, I think the evidence, the, whether it's the variety of equipment grants or this safer grant, that this legislation sets up the fund to receive that, are just, you know, another example after another example of how having a real solid chief, you know, makes the operation go smoothly. We've got enough things to focus on here in Galleon, but when you're in local government, you, you can't help but keep abreast of issues relating to township and municipal provision of EMS and fire service. And I think the rest of the county has gone through a lot of, of change. What I think this represents is how solid the arrangement is, this being the six-year contract, and then coming up that Fund Two-Sixty-Nine is really the, setting up the safer grant fund mechanism. So, Phil isn't here, I just wanted to say stuff about him that is, is absolutely true, and, and I think he also, last thing I would say is that he provides an example for the rest of supervisors of the city. He's, you know, I think he is helpful to newer supervisors and a real asset, so I'll stop pouring on that.
I'm sure even Mr. Triplet would agree with that.
So anyways, this is, this is the cooperative agreement, and, but there's another piece of legislation that I'll, I'll just say the same thing about when we get to the safer.
Dr. Felner?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash ninety.
Heard the motion by Dr. Felner, suspend the rules in this ordinance, second by Mrs. Earleston, roll call.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote, now back to discussion on the ordinance by Mr. Triplet.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash ninety.
Heard the motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Mr. Botkins, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
It also passed by seven oh vote. Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash ninety-one, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash ninety-one, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for funding through the water and wastewater infrastructure grant program funded by the American Rescue Plan Act and administered by the Ohio Department of Development in partnership with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, Dr. Felner?
Yes, this came through finance, and I would like Ms. Ward to go through it, please. Briefly? Thank you.
The projects are, same as that we submitted to the county for funding, I guess, missed our speed for it, so. The water treatment plant improvements include five or six different projects. You know, wastewater, treatment plant, low station, backup, emergency. So these are, those two are targets we already have essentially plans on the shelf, and they're ready to build, we just need funding for them. D is, as we discussed, the shared lateral situation throughout town, the older parts of town. This would give us a, I guess, a head start on funding that. Finally, B is, get another water treatment plant update. We have a, an engineer's estimate on that one, that one does not have plans, but we have an estimate of the cost of that project.
Okay. The discussion?
So this authorizes you to apply for these funds, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Richard?
Nikki, is there, you've got two, four, five items there. Is there any delay, they, it's like they, if you're applying and they come, they say, okay, we'll take the first three that you put in? Or is there, how, how does that work in this regard?
I'm not sure if we've heard whether there's, what the scoring system is, whether there, you know, you have ready-made plans, that those take priority, or those that don't. I don't know that we've heard specifically how they're gonna score these projects.
No, we haven't, no, we haven't. No, we haven't, no, we haven't. And I think the, the, there are two large pools of funds, the other county projects submitted for priority by the county engineer that was set up in the law that set this fund, this program up. There are engineering dollars and construction dollars. Most of the other stuff that was submitted in the county was for engineering design. We had enough, as Nikki said, shelf plans, if you will, projects that we just had been, we haven't had the funding for. And so, that's what we've decided to submit. Other thing I want to say, just so you get clear in your mind, you'll see more of this, is there is also money that the county commissioners are gonna divide up among the communities in the county. And so, we hope to meet with them soon and have some of the same projects, but other projects to submit to them. And then later on in the agenda, we'll talk a little bit about setting up our rescue plan funds. I know there'll be projects come out of that, although a lot of it will likely go to the utility rebate program. So, there's really three tiers of funds. A whole lot of money at state level, very competitive, money through the county commissioners that will be competitive, but I think there's a sort of a minimum set aside to reach the community. That'd be my language, I'm not sure they would say it with the same words. And then there's that local allocation that first chunk was 555, and the next chunk we'll receive next year will be that same number. So, if you think of water and sewer infrastructure improvements and the rescue plan dollars, that's kind of, if you will, a matrix of how they'll divide up and how we're trying to apply to get the maximum funds out of each one of these. This, we gotta apply, I don't wanna say long shot, but if we get a couple of these projects, we'd probably be pretty fortunate, so. That answer your question? Can I clarify?
Yeah, I had, go ahead now, I have a couple of.
I was just gonna ask, just as a review from the committee meeting that we had, the four projects that are prioritized by the Crawford County engineer are A through D, is that correct, Nikki? And the one that the city is going to submit an application for is E, the water treatment plant, clarifier, design?
Yeah, that's, that will be a design, the ones that are on the list, you're right about it.
Okay, thank you.
Clarifier design is, gee, we might as well see if all the engineering money is not committed, that will help us. We're gonna have to do that project, I think.
Right, thank you.
Other questions, discussion, Mr. Richard?
Yeah, the follow-up, what the mayor said, that's kind of what I was wondering about on these is, can somebody fill me in on the NISDR?
Yeah, that's a different way of funding that project that was, that is the water sewer lines back to the pre-center.
Okay, okay.
If you recall, the legislation that was passed before was gonna fund that out of the capital improvements fund. And so, I think the logic is if that could, if you could get that paid for with rescue fund dollars, it would allow the local capital improvements fund to stay a little more solid. So, that's the thing.
Right, well, and I understand that, Mike. The concern is if they're only gonna be funding X amount of dollars, is that going to take priority over, you know, something that we are currently in need of, so to speak?
I'll let everyone, I'll let you know, Mike, or everyone know, if this going small with existing project strategy is the way to get things done. What I, what I'm, what I see are very large requests, not to pit Galleon and Crestline, but just to use them, they have a major request to rebuild their sewer plant, going after those same funds.
Right.
And I don't know, it's not, it's not, it comes off the table, I think, but, but I, we wanna have, our approach was to apply for smaller funds, amounts of funds that we can execute on, that can be done in the near term. I'll let you know if it backfires. I, why, I think it's important and why the T word is that we had a project they could deliver.
Right.
And you know how all of us are in government, certainly it happens in state of Ohio, they want the project that is, remember shovel writing? I think that projects that can be built in the next few months, A, will score well, although we don't know the entire scoring system, and B, if you will, easy to fund. So, I don't wanna ask for $6 million for some major project and they, they look up Crawford County on the map just to get their chemistry. So, that's, and so that, you'll see that in the projects we requested, they're relatively easy to fund and that's on purpose. So, I hope I'm answering your question, not over answering or answering something else.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Dr. Felder?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2021-91.
Read the motion, suspend the rules of this ordinance by Dr. Felder, seconded by Mr. Ivey, roll call.
Dr. Thonner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Get passed by a seven oh vote, now back to ordinance. Call Mr. Triplet.
I'll make a motion to pass 2021-91.
Read the motion by Mr. Triplet, seconded by Ms. Alt, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Thonner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote, moving on to ordinance 2021-92, first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-92, in town ordinance establishing the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Fund Number 268 and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion, Dr. Felder?
Yes, this came through Finance Committee, we were busy that night. And I think the mayor alluded to this, so I'm gonna ask him to, this is a creation of a new fund, as you'll see that the next couple of ordinances also do.
In the, in the comments about Chief Jackson, that's actually 215, it's the safer fund. This is 268, it allows us to, if you pass this, this'll allow the creation of a fund. The next steps would be to put the money that we've received, but has yet to be posted, I believe, into that fund. That's that 555,000 that's been mentioned. The next step then would be to have council approve, in my hope, approve additional funds for the utility rebate. There's a, there's a discussion, I don't think anyone expected such a large response to that program. And so, what we now have are a lot of people who've applied in the CARES Act money, that 150 that was appropriated is done. And there are other people who have applied, according to the rules of the letter, that are wondering, you know, what about their $300? So, what I think, this simply creates the fund. What I think you'll see at the next meeting is a request to appropriate a certain amount of those funds so that we can finish up the funding for all of those that applied on time. If I might, the only other thing that's not part of this legislation, but there is a discussion about is, is at what date to stop accepting applications. Administratively, made a decision to shut down those applications September 1st. I don't hear very well anymore, but in the discussion before the meeting, I heard three side conversations critical of that decision. So, what I'll say is our plan would be to shut it off September 30th, but if council really thinks we need to make good on the original pledge to keep it over, open till October, we're certainly open to that. What I would say is if we keep it open till October, a large percent of that 555,000 will go to, to utility rebates, discounts, refunds, whatever you wanna call it. So, just, so if we spend 250, 300,000, keep it open till the end of October, and just be mindful that when it comes to funding the projects that we want to do with these dollars, the ones we just talked about, that money may already be out the door. So, there's, over the next couple of days, if there is a strong feeling to keep that open. The letter that people referred to also said first come, first served, which is, there's nothing that I would like to be associated least than doing that to local citizens, is the first come, first served thing. So, there are some decisions to be made. This really is setting up the fund so that we can begin to allocate this new round, two new rounds of federal money.
Thank you, Karen. Discussion, Dr. Felder?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2021-92.
Read the motion by Dr. Felder, seconded by Mr. Ivey, roll call.
Dr. Thonner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Let's see, rule passed by seven oh vote, now back to the ordinance. Mr. Richard?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-92.
Read the motion by Mr. Richards, we have a second. Mr. Ivey, seconded, a discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Thonner?
Yes.
Okay, passed by seven oh vote, now we on to ordinance 2021-93, first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-93, in town ordinance establishing the Health Department HIV Grant Fund 240 and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion, Dr. Felder?
Yes, this came through Finance Committee, and again, it's an establishment of a new fund line specifically for the Health Department concerning the HIV grants.
Okay.
So, I know that this is kind of an ongoing grant that they've been getting for a few years now. Are, is it just the new funds that are going into this fund line, or is it all the old ones going into?
Thanks for the new grant.
Just the, so the old.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
This, you're right, Kara, this is something that we had activity in in 2020 as well as in 2021. The Health Department started on their own audits in 19, with this being federal, it's part of us now having to separate it out. So, when they had their desk audit in 2020, this was one of the things that was cited and why we're now trying to separate them out. 2020 will stand as it is, the gap and everything that's done, we can't go back and change that. For the activity that has already been done for 2021 this year, it is the need and the hope that we will be able to do journals to correct that so that all the funds from 2021 will be properly reflected out of this 240 for this year. So, they're gonna kind of look at the balance that was left at the beginning of 2021 and carry forward then with that. And since you brought that up on, the same thing will be with the next fund that we're gonna establish up as well, with the exact same thing that's in place.
And so, that's a, like an Olivia thing to go through and do all the journals, or is that something that's gonna fall in your office?
It's gonna fall in our office.
Is that 240 or 241, Eunice?
This.
241?
It'll be for both 240 and 249, because that one's also an ongoing grant. That's the one that we have us this time.
Thank you.
Ms. Earleston?
Then we will progress, this is covered, since this is my funding, we'll always use.
Correct, this fund will be used for all. All revenues will now be posted to this fund as well as expenditures for it. There may be, with the one exception of payroll type stuff, which you guys have already done some transfers for some of the other grants. After talking with the state auditors, it was not a good idea or our desire to set up payroll lines in these funds. So, they will track those that are eligible that have expenses, and this is another instance where these grants are going to benefit and offset what they need to request from the city, because this will, some of this will transfer back to 230 to offset the salaries and benefits that are paid out of 230.
Other questions? Mr. Richard?
If there's no other questions, I will beat Dr. Felder at this one. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2021-93 and move to the final reading.
Read the motion by Mr. Richards, suspend the rules, we have a second. Mrs. Earleston, second motion, roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Thonner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Passed by seven oh vote, now back to the ordinance. Mr. Ivey?
I'll make the motion to pass 2021-93.
Read the motion by Mr. Ivey, we have a second. Ms. Alt, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Thonner?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote, next ordinance, 2021-94, first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-94, in town ordinance establishing the Health Department STP Grant Fund 2401 and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, Dr. Felder?
Yes, this came through Finance Committee, and as Ms. Colleen alluded to, it's the same principles of establishing a new fund for the Health Department and under the same conditions as the previous.
Okay. Other discussion? Mr. Ivey?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on 2021-94 and move to a final reading.
Heard the motion by Mr. Ivey, seconded by Mrs. Earleston, roll call.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Thonner?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Passed by seven oh vote, discussion on the ordinance. Mr. Triplet?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-94.
Heard the motion by Mr. Triplet, seconded by Mr. Botkins, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Thonner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote, next is ordinance 2021-95, first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-95, in town ordinance establishing the safer grant fund 215 and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion. Dr. Felder?
Yes, this is a, an ordinance establishing Fund 215, and it is the fund in which we will place the monies with, that we received from the safer grant. It will establish additional positions in the Fire Department for three years. This has been around for a while, there's some modifications. I think in the past, there was a requirement by the city to maintain those positions after the grant funding was ended. I don't, I think that has been eliminated. But again, this is one of the things that the mayor was championing, championing Chief Jackson about, but this is an establishment of a new fund.
Yeah, other discussion? Dr. Felder?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2021-95.
Heard the motion by Dr. Felder, seconded by Mrs. Earleston, roll call.
Dr. Thonner?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Get passed by seven oh vote, discussion on the ordinance, so, Mr. Triplet?
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-95.
Read the motion by Mr. Triplet, seconded by Ms. Alt, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Thonner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote, last one is ordinance 2021-96, first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-96, in town ordinance, many, ordinance number 2021-92, with permanent 2020 corporations, appropriating and transferring to various funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Dr. Felder?
Yes, this also came through Finance Committee, as, I think it's really self-explanatory, unless I'm misreading it, kind of rather small amounts, that happens toward the end of the year every year. I don't know that, if you've got some questions specifically about sections, I'm sure Ms. Colleen or Mr. Balding would be happy to answer them, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Just to clarify, this isn't what comes through every year, this is.
I'm sorry.
This is different.
Okay.
Section two and three is for the 340 drug pricing program for the Health Department. A month or so ago, you guys established that fund, but we did not do any appropriations at that time. So, section two appropriates some money into the contractual services, and section three appropriates funds into the materials and supplies. Section four is for an unemployment claim that we had come in that we need to cover costs on that. Section five and six, as well as seven, is to split the costs for a push camera for the water and sewer departments. And I would request that this be done as an emergency.
Thank you.
I thought we were done with unemployment.
We can file a claim anytime. I'm not sure we give it more. I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Okay.
Other discussion?
If there's no other questions, as Ms. Colleen indicated, this is a urgent matter, so I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on 2021-96 and move it to the final reading, in my voice.
Heard the motion by Mr. Richards, seconded by Mr. Ivy, roll call?
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Felder?
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote, discussion on the ordinance.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to pass 2021-96.
Heard the motion by Mr. Ivy, seconded by Mr. Botkins. Discussion? And roll call?
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Felder?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Okay, that passed by seven oh vote, we'll move on to other business, laws and ordinance meeting coming up, Mr. Richards?
Laws and ordinance will be on the 5th of October at 7:00 in this chamber.
Thank you. Mr. Triplet?
Utilities, I guess, will be on 6th.
Okay. Any other committee before the next meeting? I don't believe. Okay, council have anything else to bring up before the meeting tonight? If none, we'll move on to auditor report?
The only thing I have tonight is Brian Satterfield is continuing to work on getting revenues posted to the spreadsheet, so he can, he's just about ready to wrap up September, so it can be put into the, he thinks once he gets September done, around to start working on a, a way to get it posted to the VIP system, and that's my understanding, we're gonna have to have some, a few hours a day, kind of to shut down the system, so it can't be accessed, so it can get those numbers entered into the system. Otherwise, that's, that's really all I got.
Okay.
In the, the last meeting, you mentioned that Cindy from the state auditor's office was gonna come over sometime, but we didn't know, did, was she any, was specific about times?
Brian has not said anything in the meeting about any dates or times yet from her.
Thanks.
Probably won't know till after the first of March.
Okay.
We're hoping for October sometime, as always, she was able to give us, never heard anything.
Thank you.
Trader Sparks?
I have a thing for, one thing I just want to reiterate is, is basically a staffing issue in the auditor's office, that, that we don't have any money, I don't want anybody to think that, so, we do have funds to operate, so, I don't want anybody to, you know, in the public, you know, to think that, that that's an issue, it's just a, a staffing issue, and Eunice and Gale have been doing a great job with what they got, and Brian is a great addition to, to what we have, so, we'll figure it out, and, you know, go from there.
Land Reg, public?
Nothing in that, thank you.
Mayor Olivia?
I will make it quick, the 4th at Grace Point, I'm gonna say 7:00?
6:00.
6:00, there'll be a public meeting, we've done a few of those over the years for the highway type pro, or highway projects. This is a meeting that will have ODOT representatives, city reps, as well as contract representatives to talk about the, the project. They're either going to start the 17th, I believe, whatever Monday, so the 4th plus 7, I'll be, the 11th or the 18th of October. So they're gonna, that project will start real quickly, and so if you want to know more about it, most certainly come to that public meeting on, on, on Monday night, so. I guess that's it, unless there are any questions?
Any questions of the mayor? It's been a good meeting tonight.
Miranda was able to administer, Miranda Jones administered that business assistance program, pushed out, I think, $200,000, $50,000, something like that, so that's, because she was still here, I wanted to recognize that, that's, those are the CARES Act dollars. And so anyway, that's probably the last of that for, for a while, so if you want to operate without this local grants.
Okay, Miranda?
Yeah, thank you to council and to the, the city offices that were pivotal in getting that money out. It was a total of 190 that we did across 61 businesses. So there were 15 of the Port Authority, the people who took out the Port Authority loan, they were awarded 5,000, because that was the amount of the Port Authority loan, with the intent that they would use that to pay back the Port Authority, and then there were 46 $2,500 grants. So, and all the businesses were very grateful, so thank you again for our trust in us back.
Anybody else have anything for, you know, it's been a good meeting tonight, lots of things took place, and I think Mr. Triplet has a motion here.
I'd be glad to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Earleston, all papers say aye?